Yeah, you're gonna, you wanna call out the order?
Yep.
Okay, let me go.
I hear five.
Do your thing.
The meeting at seven oh seven P. M. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, now I will call for nominations for the office of president for the Board of Education. I have a nomination.
I'd like to nominate Gus Huber.
Okay, can I have a second? Okay, are there any further nominations? Okay, nominations are now closed. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion now passes. I declare Gus Huber is declared president of the Board of Education for the 2025-2026 school year. Congratulations. Someone else swear you in? Okay, raise your right hand, sir. I state my name.
I, Gus Huber.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I would support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I would support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of Board President.
Of Board President.
For the Comac School District according to the best of my ability.
For the Comac School District according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, sir. I will now officially turn over the meeting to the new board president, Gus Huber. Okay, and this is for you.
Okay, so. At this time, I will now accept nominations for the office of vice president of the Board of Education.
I'd nominate Sue Hammer for the role of vice president for the Board of Education.
Thirty seconds. Any other nominees, nominations? As there are none, I'd like to recognize Sue Hammer as the next vice president of the Board of Education.
We gotta vote.
Oh, we gotta vote.
We'll get the vote.
All those in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
I propose. Congratulations, sir.
Oops. Okay, so we're assuming. Okay, raise your right hand. I state my name. I, Susan Hammer. Do affirm?
Do affirm.
That I would support the Constitution of the United States of America.
I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of Board Vice President.
Of Board Vice President.
For the Comac School District according to the best of my ability.
For the Comac School District according to my ability.
Congratulations, Sue. Okay, this goes here.
I promise you next month we'll have a little bit more.
Congratulations.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to conduct a roll call. We will start here to my left. Mr. Savoashen, Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources. Ms. Laura Newman, Assistant Superintendent for Business and Operations. Ms. Dana Schultz, Board Trustee. Dr. Bill Hender, Board Trustee. Mr. Jordan, Dr. Jordan Cox, Superintendent. Myself, Gus Huber. Ms. Sue Hammer, Board Vice President. Ms. Nicole Goldstein, Board Trustee. Mr. Tim Russo, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. Mr. Gene Barnowski, District Counsel. Ms. Debbie Verger, District Clerk. And Ms. Kyla Gruber, our student representative. Welcome, Kyla. All right. So at this point, I would need a motion to approve appointments for the 2025-2026 school year. Do I have a motion? A second?
Second.
A motion to approve official designation?
All in favor?
Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. An emotion to approve the official designations for the 25-26 school year. A motion?
Motion.
A second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and at this point, I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Cox for the administrative report.
Thank you, Mr. Huber. So I'm just gonna quickly go over the agenda. Before I do, I just wanna welcome everyone to our first board meeting, official board meeting for the 2025-26 school year. For us, yes, the school year starts July 1st, so very excited. On tonight's agenda, we're gonna start off with a public hearing, district-wide emergency response plan. Then we are going to have our new student ex officio board member present the student body report.
Dr. Cox, we should close the reorg meeting and start the regular meeting if you don't mind.
No, go right ahead.
All right, so at this point, I'm gonna make a motion to close the reorg meeting.
Motion.
A second? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
And then now we're gonna make a motion to conduct our regular board meeting at this point. A motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
No, no worries. Thank you.
All right, here we go again. Part two.
We are still going to do the public hearing on the district-wide emergency response plan. This is still our first board meeting of the 25-26 school year. We're really excited, Kyla. We've had the chance to meet a number of times. I'm so excited to hear your first report, and we welcome you as our ex officio student board member. Congratulations again. We will provide, Mr. Palapoli will provide our Director of Facilities an update on some of the summer work that's going on. And then at the end, we have a few policy updates, some new policies, some that are renewed annually during this meeting that we will go over. So we're going to first start off with our Board of Education public hearing on our district-wide safety plan. Mrs. Newman?
All right, thank you, Dr. Cox. And yes, we are starting our district-wide emergency response plan public hearing. The purpose of a district-wide emergency response plan is to provide instructions and guidelines for students and staff as well as visitors in case of an emergency situation. The scope of the plan covers all district-owned buildings, including our auxiliary buildings. Each of those buildings will customize their own building-level emergency management plan as well. The authority, the district incident commander, is the superintendent of schools or his designee. Likewise, in a building, the incident commander is the principal or their designee. Every school district in New York State must have a written plan and must review it each year. Regarding our drills, when we do a lockdown drill, we announce to staff, students, and anyone in the building that this is a drill, this is a drill, so that they are aware. We do not do that for evacuation drills. Parents will be notified at least one week prior to any and all drills being given, so that they are aware. One of the new items that the state is requiring is when we do our drills, that we be mindful of trauma that could occur between students and staff, and that we are to conduct our drills in a fashion that does not promote trauma, meaning they do not want any sort of realistic simulations to occur. I will emphasize that Comac has never done that. We have always not used simulations within our drills. The state has also changed some of the terminology. As some of you are aware, there has been widespread confusion sometimes between lockout and lockdown drills. As a result, the state has now changed the terminology. From this point forward, we will be calling lockouts secure lockouts. You may also know that Dr. Cox, whenever he sends out communication to the community and parents, has always put that definition within the communications to help negate and mitigate some of that confusion statewide. They have recognized that as well. The process for our district-wide emergency response plan, we begin this evening opening up a public portion, a public hearing for the response plan. The response plan is on our website. The public has the opportunity to provide comments, suggestions, et cetera. We ask that those be emailed to our Director of Security. His email address is on the screen and will also be on our website. That occurs between now and August 11th. During that time, district staff will be reviewing not only the response plan, but any public comments that we receive. At the next board meeting, which is August 21st, the district will place the response plan on the agenda for the board to provide approval for. This would conclude the public hearing portion for this evening, and I would now open up to the Board of Education if they have any questions, and then the public.
Any questions? Nope? Okay.
Any questions from the public?
All right.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Newman. So we're all excited. Kyla, totally up to you. If you feel comfortable, I'm gonna give you the clicker. You can come up here. You wanna? Let's hear it for Kyla.
Hi, everyone. I'd like to start off by just saying that I'm really excited to be here for my first board meeting as a student member. As the school year begins in September, I'll hopefully have more like actual student-based voices and information to share with you, but for now, I'm just gonna be going over some of the exciting end-of-year highlights and achievements across the district. So at our primary schools, each building held Flag Day celebrations. They brought in special guests such as veterans and school leaders, and they also had patriotic music to make the day special for all the students. Each building also held the second-grade moving up ceremony to celebrate the students as they'll be moving into the intermediate schools next year. And a very special tradition of the senior walk brought all of the high school graduates back to their primary schools, where they were able to connect with their primary school teachers and inspire the younger students by showing them how far they've come. At Burn, at Burn Sawmill, they wrapped up the year with incredible achievements and fun. Sawmill students competed in the National Science League, and they placed second in the nation. In addition to placing second as a team, fifth grader Jason J. earned a perfect score, and he placed first in the country. Students were also recognized during the first-ever superstar awards ceremony. In this ceremony, they were recognized and celebrated for their perseverance, determination, and hard work throughout the school year. At Burr, students participated in Ride for Life to Raise Awareness for ALS. They celebrated field day events filled with fun activities to bring all of the students together, and they also held a memorable Flag Day ceremony. Comac Middle School also ended off the year strong. They held a formal moving up ceremony for eighth graders as they'll be moving into the high school next year. They also had many fun events for the eighth graders, including the eighth-grade dance, eighth-grade barbecue, and yearbook signing, and a fun eighth-grade field trip. As for student recognition, two eighth graders, Sean O. and Tommy S., were awarded the John Newman Scholarship. This award is given to students who show good character and fair play in the CYO program, and it honors the legacy of John Newman, a longtime coach and Comac community member. One of the most exciting moments for Comac High School this year was when we were featured live on CBS New York's Class Act segment. We were the first school in Suffolk County ever chosen for this honor. More than 700 students and staff packed the gym at 5:00 A. M. to bring the energy for a pep rally showing Comac's spirit. The segment showcased amazing things happening at CHS, including our new Bloomberg Financial Lab, esports arena, mock trial courtroom, and college-style cafeteria. At this event, we also had the cougarettes performing and the marching bands playing songs. In addition to the CBS feature, Comac High School held many other special events. We held Battle of the Classes, where each grade competed in events showing their school pride and spirit, as well as class unity. We also held our second annual Comac Day, bringing the entire school together for an unforgettable afternoon. It was filled with performances, career panels featuring Comac alumni, and games and community activities. As the year came to close, the seniors began a new tradition, gathering on the football fields for a senior countdown, and they counted down the final 10 seconds of their high school careers together. And of course, we ended it all with graduation, where the class of 2025 officially became Comac alumni. It was a beautiful ceremony, celebrating all that they've accomplished and everything that's to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Kyla.
Great job, Kyla.
Sounds like a great place to go to school.
We're so incredibly proud of you, and if this is your first presentation, you set the bar really, really high for even my administrative reports for the rest of the 25-26 school year. At this point, we're going to invite Mr. Palapoli up to present some of the summer work that's taking place throughout the district. Thank you, Mr. Palapoli.
Great job.
No pressure, Frank.
I'll act, I'll tell you that right now. Great work. So as Dr. Cox said, thank you. So this is our door jar project, what'll be starting, it's actually, it's coming Monday. We currently have door jar at the high school and middle school. And this project, as you can see here, and it lets staff members know if a door is open in the building, it's actually red. If the door is closed, it's green, so it's another kind of checks and balances we have throughout the district for security, excuse me. District-wide door placements, some of these doors are original to the buildings. You can see there that door is kinda deteriorating in the bottom there, so we're replacing some doors on certain buildings throughout the district, and this is a needed update we needed to take care of this summer. District HVAC upgrades, we have two, actually now one unit left. We installed our second-to-last unit, actually, this was Tuesday at Sawmill. So I wanted to show the slide, I'll come back in a minute, the sheer size of these units, that we need two rigs to do it, two tractor trailers, actually have to get permits to pull these units onto roads, so it takes some time to get these things done. That's why I have to do these after hours or on weekends or holidays. We can't do it during school day for the danger of safety of students and staff. Boil upgrades, again, I joke with Dr. Cox a lot, these aren't the attractive things we like to do throughout the district, but it's something we do need to do. This is actually Smits Lane, it's actually the oldest boilers in the district, about 50, 60 years old, so we're replacing those this summer. And heating pumps, again, not a very attractive thing that people wanna see or look at or understand, but these heating pumps actually what helps circulate heat throughout wings in the buildings. So again, if we don't have them, you're gonna realize that you won't see them or look at them and notice them, but it's something you will feel if you don't have those working properly. So we're trying to reinvest our infrastructure throughout the district right now. And continuation of the gym floor upgrades throughout the district, we're doing two more additional floors this summer. This is actually the new gym at the middle school. So as you can see there, that's about 20 years of polyurethane on those floors that are standing off with that machine, the gentleman's riding on there. And we're rebranding the floor with the Comac paw print, all new lines in there, and also gonna reseal it with actually water-based polyurethane. New York State, there's no more oil-based, only water-based, so we're trying to go eco with everything now moving forward. And this is our in-house project, we do, we have a lot of in-house projects, but to highlight a couple, this is Burr's Student Union Space, similar to the Sawmill Beaver Den, it's kind of a rec room they have there. This is kinda similar what they're doing at Burr, so we're building actually a stage area for students, so we're gonna have a green screen, in addition to that, some stadiums seating along the windows there, so I know it's a really welcome addition that they're looking to have. And this is our team here doing this, actually last week, they're putting a sheet rock up. And this is a continuation of the diamond cutting project we've been doing throughout the district. What it is, is basically we're wet sanding the floors, and it comes with like a really nice shine. I know Dr. Cox was walking buildings last year, and he said, can I walk in here? Is it safe to walk in here right now?
It looks almost wet, it's so, it just shines so much.
Yeah. So, and you know, as we all know, in the middle school, that hallway there is almost like a runway, so they're doing that this summer, hitting the whole hallway, and it's gonna definitely be a welcome addition to that building for sure.
So just real quick on the diamond cutting process, Mr. Palapoli, it's accurate to say it also, although it looks wet and slippery, the traction is actually better.
That is correct, it's actually a non-slip clause with that, when we actually invested in this item. In addition to that, also the savings on wax, no more waxing floors, no more, you know, labor for the staff to take time doing that, so you can focus on more cleaning in classrooms, and also dusting and painting throughout the building, so it's a win-win for everybody. This is our in-house project for the life skills room at the high school. I've showed this slide once or twice, I apologize if those of you who've seen this, but actually that floor in that room is going in starting this Friday, so as soon as I have new pictures of this, I'll share them with everybody. The furniture has been ordered for this space, so I wanna have a new updated picture probably for August possibly, I'll share that photo. In addition to this space, right adjacent to that, there's another life skills room we're working on that this summer as well, so we have two spaces right next to each other we have done for next year. And I'd just like to highlight some of the things that these custodians staff does over the summer, people a lot of times don't realize what they do do. So this is example of, basically, they take everything out of a classroom every year, clean everything top to bottom, paint, clean out lights, desktops, chairs, scrub the floor, wax it, and then put everything back in there. So every room is basically clean, top to bottom, every summer, so when the kids arrive next year, September 1st, it's a brand-new classroom for them.
Questions from the Board of Education regarding some of the summer work? All right, thank you, Mr. Palapoli.
Yes, sir.
Well done.
Thank you.
At this point, I'm going to invite Dr. Infornar up to the podium to take us through some of our policy updates.
All right, thank you, Dr. Cox. Just for some context, 2019, we redid our whole policy book. From them, we do, from then, we do our best to keep it as up-to-date as possible and hold these sessions monthly or as needed, so that we are always in alignment with our goals, our vision, and of course, the law. So tonight, we have four different categories of work we're gonna do associated with policy. First is a code of conduct public hearing. Second and third, we have annual readoptions, those are policies that by law must be readopted annually. Some have changes, some don't, and then we have a couple of new policies. So we'll go in that order, the first being the code of conduct. And very simply stated, in the Commission of Regulations, it says that each board must annually review and update as necessary its code of conduct. In Comac here, our administrative staff, our principals, our legal team, we all look at the code of conduct and present to the board any recommendations after that review. This year, there are two reviews, or two action items, I would say. First, we're looking to update the list of DAC coordinators, we have a new principal at Northridge, a new assistant principal at Sawmill, so those two names will be updated accordingly. And then under the subsection of prohibited student conduct, there's language added that would be related to the cell phone policy that will be discussed also later in this presentation. I will remind everybody that the approval of these policies don't come until later through the agenda, this is, you know, presentation to the board and at this time. So, code of conduct, like the safety plan, is a public hearing, so first, we're asking the board if they have any questions, and then we'll ask the public.
Any questions from the board related to the two revisions for the code of conduct? Any questions from the public? Thank you, Dr. Infornar.
All right. So, next slides that follow, you know, annual policy readoptions, new policies. The, what you see on the screen are the six policies that have no recommended changes. So what we're asking the board to do is, as required by law, again, readopt these policies with no revisions. As you saw them for the last 365 days, will be for the next 365 days. However, there are two that require annual readoption that do have changes. One was the code of conduct, which we just discussed, and the other is related to Title IX, and it's less a change, but it's more a rescission of this policy, and the readoption of the 2020 version, which puts us in alignment with federal law. The three new policies that we're putting in front of the board tonight for consideration of adoption. First, independent evaluation. I will share that, that's not a legally required policy, however, it's one that we're asking the board to consider, as it codifies our practice in alignment with Commission of Regulations in the Part 200. This essentially has to do with the rights of parents to ask for independent educational evaluations. And the next one has to do with the max temperature, this was a law passed last year that had to do with thresholds such as 82 and 88 degrees, where if a building gets too hot, certain actions have to be taken. The policy outlines what those actions are, from whether it be shutting off the lights or taking a temperature, or, you know, some other manner of cooling down the room. The policy outlines those actions and, again, aligns with the law. The third and final policy, next to the big star there, and the star is there because I'll go into a little bit more detail on the following slides, is related to the governor's legislation that was put into the New York State budget that was passed in, well, it was late this year, so I think it was April, May? May? May, it was. So that's the, what they call the cellphone ban, internet-connected devices and cellphones during the school day. So again, that is New York State law. Our role here is to implement the law, and the law requires us to have a policy adopted by August 1st. So to go in a little bit more detail about that, first, I just wanna say thank you, there are, all of our policies involve the people. We don't present something to the board that comes out of one person or comes out of, you know, a document we get from, you know, BOCs, for example. There was a group of people that had input on the cellphone policy, that includes our technology committee, in which Ms. Schultz and Ms. Polium sit, which included parents, administrators, students, and community members. We also took some time, you know, again, thank you, Dr. Cox, and building principals, Ms. Lippenholtz and Dr. Larson, you know, we spoke with students and got their voices as well related to the cellphone law that came out from the governor's office. So a big thank you to you, because that helped us, you know, write the policy and be able to present it to the board today. And this is what the policy includes. First is definition, what's an internet-enabled device, what's a cellphone, what's a school day, what's school grounds? So for example, as it will relate to this law, school grounds is, it's basically you take the property line, and it's everything within the property line. Property line's here, banned, property line's here, it's okay. So it has that property line language in it, and it's just example of one. There is a section about students are prohibited from using cellphones from bell to bell, so what's that mean? It means from the, you know, the minute you walk into the building and school starts till the end of the day. However, you may be authorized, or students may be authorized, to use their cellphones when it comes to educational purposes. For example, our one-to-one Chromebooks, it has to do with healthcare management. There are apps, like if a student has, you know, diabetes, that they may need to monitor their blood levels, things of that nature. So the law does provide for certain authorized uses. Also, if it's written into a student's IEP or 504, again, would be allowable. In terms of student discipline, the law is very clear, students cannot be suspended for violating this policy. However, and this relates back to the code of conduct, if there's a pattern of insubordination, then that would be a violation of the code of conduct, and that is actionable, whereas suspending a student simply for having a cellphone would not be. There are requirements in terms of posting notification, translation, reporting, those are on the screen, the policy is of course posted to the website, as is all of our policies. The parents are gonna be notified in the ways of which contacting students during the school hours. The parents are going to be notified in the ways of which contacting students during the school hours, that will be in our district calendar, will be the notification, as well as Dr. Cox sent out, you know, something a few days ago, a few weeks ago. Also, we have to do an annual report. So if, and I say if, a student was using the cellphone and it's documented as a warning or there's some other type of action, disaggregated data, so, you know, it will be on the, on the website, and we were required to take action if there's any sort of disproportionality with that. And again, only non-identifiable data. So to the little bit of the nitty-gritty in terms of storage, so it's different K-5 and 6 through 12. So students in grades K through five, personal devices, called a smartwatch, a smartphone, any other internet-connected device that comes with them to school will be stored in designated areas in the classroom, for example, the classroom cubby. And that's where it'll stay from start to end. In the secondary schools, student-provided lockers are where those devices will stay from the start of the school day until the end. In terms of contacting your student during the day and ways for your student to contact you, you know, we are building expanded phone access. So there's additional phone lines being placed into the middle school and the high school and throughout the district where students can pick up and they can call home as needed at an appropriate time. There is student access. So for example, all students have email that is right now contained within our network. But if your parent or guardian's email is in Infinite Campus, we will white-list it, which means that now you can have that conversation with your child in email. And then lastly, staff support. I mean, you can call any office, you can call any staff member, and if you need to get a message to your child, we will get it to them. So with that being said, that is a little bit more detail on the cellphone policy. We looked at a bunch tonight, and of course, questions from the board.
Are you saying that kids can't use their cell phones in between classes and at lunch?
That's correct. It's from bell to bell. So it is instructional and non-instructional time.
And I just want to clarify, the emails only for the middle school and the high school students to communicate back and forth, not for...
Thank you, Ms. Schultz. Yes, for secondary students only.
So I have a question related to students with IEPs and 504s who may be given use of their personal devices as opposed to requiring us to provide them with district technology. Is there, is there something on their personal device that they would be doing that they couldn't do with district technology?
That would be something that we would evaluate. So if we have the opportunity to be able to create a pathway for them through their Chromebook, we would look to do that first if we could. But ultimately, it would be a CSE decision on whether or not that gets placed on their, on their IEP.
Okay. And then my second was, when we talk about high school students or secondary students, keeping them in their lockers, what would be the purpose in having them in the classroom then? Say, say I'm a history teacher and take out your cell phones and let's look at this. That's not a possibility then. So using them in the classroom at teacher discretion really wouldn't be possible because they're stored in lockers, correct?
Correct.
It would have to be prearranged. So if you are a teacher and you're doing an assignment and you had, you know, spoken to your administration or however the procedures work, we're just establishing the policy, but the procedures for each building, you know, if the teacher went to the administrator and said, "Hey, I'd really like to use our phones tomorrow because we're going to be doing this activity in class," then they would have permission to bring their phones to the classroom. But otherwise, they have to be stored within the lockers during the school day.
And again, there's something on the phone that, that they would have access to that they wouldn't through district technology? Is that something as far as the assignment is concerned?
Yeah, I'll let Mrs. Polium, if you want to.
So in certain cases, there might be?
You know, for example, I'll use an example that we used from Comac Day with doing a goose chase. Certain, certain applications only allow for iOS, or they need you to capture a video with using it on a Chromebook. It wouldn't have that, that ability. So where possible, it would be done on a Chromebook. But there are, there's very few exceptions, but there are exceptions where certain video or certain application-based things would, aren't available on a Chromebook.
Yeah, my concern would be just creating like gray areas for kids. So if I brought it to my fourth-period class because my history teacher's doing something, then I have it with me for pretty much the rest of the day. My friends see me with it, so the kids don't have that kind of discretion to just bring it to fourth-period class and then go back to their locker and put it away. I'm just saying it kind of muddies the policy a little bit, particularly at the secondary levels. So, I don't know. Maybe the assignments could be based upon district technology as opposed to a cellphone? I'm not sure. But that's, you know, down the road for high school administration, secondary administration there. Good luck. Good luck. Yes. It, listen, it's difficult. It's a very difficult policy, as you know, going into it. It's a part of the culture, so.
So one of the things that when we met with the students that was, that really came to the forefront was the ability to communicate with parents, parents to communicate with students. So obviously, the elementary is going to look a lot different than what the secondary is. We took a very different approach to this. You know, we wanted to find out exactly what it was from students and from parents, you know, that they use this device for. We will find ways, as much as we can, if we have to purchase maybe some additional iPads for certain areas, we can do that. But when it gets to the point where it becomes cost prohibitive, there may be exceptions to that where, you know, we will find ways to manage it with the cell phones. We'll find opportunities. I know one of the concerns is whether or not the students are going to have time to get to their lockers in the morning or the afternoon. We've had that conversation. We will have the ability because there's time built into the morning and the afternoon of the day in both secondary schools to allow students to store them in their lockers. But we wanted to create, we wanted to find opportunities to enhance communication. So one of the things that Dr. Inforni said is email and the ability to whitelist emails in Infinite Campus of parents who have their email in Infinite Campus. Secondary students will have an email platform, and so if the parents need to get in touch, it's a great tool for time management, for students to say, "Hey, you know what? I'm going to check my email during lunch," or "I'm going to check my email in the before-school or after-school." But of course, if it's an emergency, when I sent out the letter to the community, the FAQ has numbers in there. So if you really need to get in touch with or relay a message, there are numbers that you can call in each of the buildings to get in touch with a staff member to relay a message to your child. Yes, this will, this will be something that we will manage. And, you know, it's something new. It's, it's, you know, the law. You know, Ms. Hammer, you asked about, you know, hallways, recess, things like that. It's explicitly stated that they are not allowed to use them during those times. So obviously, we're finding ways to allow students to be able to communicate differently using their Chromebooks. But this will be something that, it'll be a learning process for all of us.
I'd just like to thank everyone who participated in the committee. I know what a difficult task this was, having partaken in it myself with little guidance and a very short deadline of making sure that it's all done before August first. So thank you for everyone that put the time and effort into it. One of the things that was, you know, discussed, and I'm glad Dr. Inforni mentioned it, was school grounds and what the definition of school grounds is. Because I know there are parents that have concerns when a child goes on a field trip per se overnight or something along those lines. Once they're on a field trip, they are not on school grounds. So correct me if I'm wrong, barring any procedural changes, policy-wise, they would be permitted to utilize their cell phones at that time? Thank you.
Yes.
Yep. And good luck, Dr. Larson and Mrs. Lippenholtz, on the procedures that you're going to follow.
Then I guess also informing the parents and students of what phones kids can use to reach home, right, during the school day? Because normally, they didn't do that. So now they're going to have to go to different offices. We can't go back to payphones.
I'm investing stock in payphones, actually.
I'm investing, yeah, in New York.
Right down by the north gym.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you. So that concludes our policy. Thank you, Dr. Inforni. And our next meeting will be in August, where we will present to the board the opening of school, as well as our Board of Education goals. We'll be prepared to present them at that time as well. So at this time, I turn it back to the board president.
All right, so at this point, we do not have any committee reports. And I think we're going to be going into our first public session, correct? Or is that out of order? I'm sorry? Yeah. So I'm going to ask Ms. Hammer to read the Board of Education statement.
A board meeting has two opportunities for public comment. One, where the public can comment on specific agenda items only, and one at the end of the meeting, when the public can comment on other school district matters. Please take a white card if you have a question or a specific agenda items, and a green card if you have comments during public participation on other school matters. Comments must be no longer than three minutes. The district clerk will call each person by a number. We are monitoring the time, and we will let speakers know when their time is completed. When called up to the microphone, please state your name and whether you are a district resident. Please only speak to the board directly. The board appreciates the community's feedback. These commentary periods are not times for public debate or for answering specific questions where a direct answer cannot be provided. We will make a note of any questions where the answer is not known and provide a response as soon as possible to the person asking the question. Public comment does not allow for positive or negative statements about a specific employee as it relates to his or her job performance. Any matters related to specific students will not be discussed. The president shall terminate the right of any speaker if they are overly lengthy, repetitive, disruptive, disrespectful to anyone, or, and/or offensive as well if the public becomes unruly and lacks respect for others. Thank you.
Okay, at this point, I'm going to ask Ms. Verga to call up the numbers.
Okay, this would be white card. If anyone has a white card, number one. No, anyone else have a white card? Okay.
That was easy. Thank you. Okay, moving on, we're going to go to donations. We're going to make a motion to adopt a resolution to accept the following listed donations. So be it resolved that the board accept on behalf of the district donations by the following to be applied as requested, and it be further resolved that the district will deposit these funds as listed, and be it further resolved that the board authorize an increase as necessary to the listed budget code for the use of these funds. We have a donation from Daniella Conti Foundation for Butterfly Reading Bench for Sawmill's library, valued at $2,195. And we also have a donation from the Comac Soccer League to provide temporary lighting for Soccer Under the Stars at the Comac High School on September 30th, 2025, valued at $5,200. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Yeah, a second. All those in favor? All right.
Yep, just, yep, that will be the last time, hopefully, that the Comac Soccer League will have to donate for lights. Thank you to our public for voting for the budget, which included lights for our turf field at the high school. And that also means, you know, myself doing a little math, that the Comac Soccer League will be reducing rates in the future. Now that I have three kids in there. Thank you.
Okay. At this point, I'd like to acknowledge the correspondence as listed. That's, we're out of sorts here, right? We're skipping, right? Approve the minutes, okay. So at this point, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the June 5th, 2025 board meeting, and the June 12th, 2025 special meeting, and the June 23rd, 2025 meeting. Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So at this point, a motion to approve the minutes from the June 5th, 2025 Board of Education. Oh, no, sorry, where am I? A motion to approve the personnel agenda. They have a motion. Second? And all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so at this point, I want to acknowledge a few people in the audience who are here tonight. Some are getting probation. Skylar Bocini, is she here? Skylar, congratulations. James, I see James, James Gardnell, congratulations. Patrick Lancy, congratulations, thank you. Michael Comarchero. Brianna Lutzakis, Lutzakis, okay. Heather Macaron. And Avin Napoli. Welcome. And we have someone getting tenure tonight. We have Joanne Fenacy, Director of Mathematics, congratulations. Anybody I missed that's sitting in the audience? All right, welcome to the...
Harley.
Harley, Harley, please stand.
All right. Welcome again to the Comac School District. All right. A motion to approve consent agenda items as presented, two through 15. Can I get a motion? Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any conversation, comments? Okay. A motion to approve cons... No, where are we here? It's not going. Okay. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools. The Board of Education approves the first reading of Policy Number 7316, Use of Cellphones and Internet-enabled Devices During the School Day. Also, Policy 768, Independent Educational Evaluations. Policy 3410, the code of conduct policy. Policy 5685, maximum temperature for school buildings and indoor facilities. Rescind and replace Policy 3421, Title IX and Sex Discrimination Policy. 5220, District Investment Policy. 5410, Purchasing Competitive Bidding and Offering Policy. 5411, Procurement of Goods and Services. 5412, Alternative Formats for Instructional Materials. 5661, Wellness Policy. Also, 8260, the Parent and Family Involvement. Be it further resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education approved the second reading and moves to adopt the policies tonight. Can I get a motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Acknowledge receipt of professional services from Bonds, Shonik, and King, PLLC, for the month ending May 2025 in the amount of $24,612.50. Also, acknowledge receipt of the May 2025 financial reports listed below. Do I need to read those? Acknowledging receipt of the federal and state grants received in the 2025-2026 school year. Acknowledge receipt of the internal claims auditor's monthly report, monthly update, sorry. Acknowledge receipt of the Committee on Special Education, June 9, June 10, June 11, June 12, June 13, June 16, June 17, June 18, June 23, June 24, June 25, and June 26. Acknowledge receipt of the Committee on Preschool Special Education for June 10, 11, 16, 18, and 25. And the Board of Education of the Comac Union School Free District shall hold its regular meeting on Thursday, August 21st, at 6:00 p.m. at the HUBS Administration Center, 480 Clay Pitts Road, East Northport, New York. It's anticipated the Board will make a motion for the purpose of adjourning into executive session at this time. And at 7:00 p.m., the Board will reconvene in public session for the purpose of holding its regular business meeting. And with that, we'll have our second public participation.
Okay, this will be the green card. If anyone has a green card and they would like to speak, number one, green card. Okay, anyone have a green card at all would like to speak?
Okay, being that no one is looking to speak, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn this Board of Education meeting. Can I get a motion? Second? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you all for coming.